June the 4th, 2024 at 6:30 PM. Please silence all electronic devices. Tonight, please stand. The prayer will be by Mr. Golder and the pledge by Councilman Elvin.
Most times we go to the church with God while we stand before you in the mighty name of Jesus. Lord, we ask for continued guidance and direction from our city legal. Lord, continue to move our city forward. Lord, we ask that you wrap your hands around our first responders, O God. Keep them in safe hands, for these are trying times, and in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Elvin, and thank you Reverend Golder. That brings us to our agenda order of approval. Do we have any changes, Ms. Shancy? Do we have a motion by council to approve the order? Agenda order?
So moved.
Motion by councilmen, go up. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, any discussion? All in favor? Councilman George? Motion carries. That brings us to our announcements by Ms. Shancy.
The City of Goche's Drive-In Movie Night featuring Barbie will be this Friday, June 7th, beginning at 8:00 PM at the former Senator Mall property. Goche's Farmer's Market will be this Saturday, June 8th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the former Senator Mall property. Tasty Thirsty will be June 27th, starting at 11:00 AM at the former Senator Mall property. And Jackson County and the City of Goche will be hosting a community campout at Shepherd State Park on June 29th through June 30th. Check-in will begin on June 29th at 1:00 PM.
Thank you, Ms. Shancy. That brings us to our presentation agenda, and we do not have anything this evening. And that brings us to business agenda item number one. Creation, reclassification, and elimination of specified positions and approval of the revised schedule of authorized positions by Ms. Shancy.
Yes, Mayor, we used this in the past, but it hasn't been implemented in some time. But this will create nine part-time firefighters positions, which will help alleviate the overhang due to labor shortage and help the system environment would not be overworked. The funds will also occur within your current budget, and will be good for the city, so I understand we have a lot of interest in this position. So this is being implemented, the funds of us having so many people out, so many vacant cities, and too much overtime.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number one? Do we have a motion by council?
So moved.
Got a motion by Councilman College?
Second.
And second by Councilman Anderson, any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Gilat?
Yeah, the background says due to high turnover and recruitment issues. What's the reason for the high turnover? Can anybody answer that?
I will, Josh, you want to jump in? I think we've had a lot of long-term firemen retire.
Retired?
Retire, yes, just recently.
We did have a long retirement, and also, we were kind of behind it. You know, we got pay raises like three years ago or whatever, and then as soon as we got the pay raise, we bumped up. And then as soon as we did it, all the other cities did it. Moss Point did it, Coach's Park did it, Pascagoula did it, and just kind of bumped up. And then, once they make more money over there, their chief will follow over here and say, hey, well, we're making more money. We can hire you at this much if you come over here. It's kind of like you've been getting poached a little bit for other departments.
Is all the other cities paying higher than us?
Yes, sir. What, Mr.?
How much?
It varies.
Average, about a thousand?
Between...
A year to five thousand or what?
Starting at, starting off by, we just went with the 33. The next closest is 34 or 35, and Pascagoula, 36, and then 39.
Thirty-nine in Moss Point?
Is that dollars per hour?
No.
No, it's not?
Starting out as a year.
Oh, oh, a year.
But now, keep in mind, the way some municipalities raise their lease pay and their retirement pay is they don't build positions and use that money to raise the pay, which, yes, you're getting a pay raise, but you're also not sufficiently staffed, so...
That's where Moss Point, they're...
Well, they, is the other cities having problems hiring people at those rates?
Everybody's having trouble, all of them.
So it's just not us? Even though they stealing from us, they ain't getting enough. Well, what are we going to do about it? Are we going to go in a budget this coming year and settle raises?
We're going to have to look at it every year, but we do that every year. It's like, this has been a game of yours since I've been here. We raise it, once we raise it, they raise it up. You just constantly are doing this, constantly.
Is that happening in the police department?
It's happened there, it's happened there.
So retirements and pay raises by the other cities?
Yes, sir, we have a retirement at the end of this month, and then we have two other people that are eligible for the time. And we just lost another guy in the city. We have four retirements this year, sir.
Okay, we raising, giving you nine part-time positions. What's going to happen? Are we going to bring in firemen from the other cities on their day off?
Yes, sir. They'll probably work here on their day off.
They're all going to jump on that, because that gets them to retirement quicker. Because I got a, I got a son that's doing that right now. He works for Pascagoula, but he also works for Jackson County. He's doing seven days a week. It's crazy.
That's, that's kind of why we're wanting to do this, because there's guys that will work the four-time days straight.
Yeah.
They're getting burnt out.
Okay. So we can't do anything for a bunch of time, huh? Can't give them 10 grand a year right now? Oh, come on. I don't have any more questions.
Councilman College?
These part-time positions, do they fall under the union or not?
Actually, the union contract, right, my mom provides for this to be implemented, but they, they're okay with it. I think he ran it by, and they're okay with it, because the way we're going to...
Okay, so union's on board, okay, that's why I wanted to make sure. Okay, that's all I need now.
It also states in the contract that if we go over...
Hold on, if, it's one person talking. Go ahead, Chief.
If it goes over, I think, 55% for March, March 1st, we can implement it. It's, it's in the contract that says that.
Okay.
Have you ever worked with that?
Okay, thank you, that's all I have, thank you. Councilman Anderson?
Yes, do we have a requirement that after we train an officer or a fireman, that they have to stay with us so long before they...
The way it marks is if they go somewhere else, wherever they go, has to reimburse us the cost of...
Oh.
If they're two years. If they have to stay with us for two years, or if they leave before that two years, that city reimburses.
Okay, that's all I got, thank you.
Councilman Elvin?
Part-timers that come over here to work for us, who, whose insurance are they, do they fall under? Their cities that they come from, or they fall under us if it's...
What insurance are you talking about, medical?
Mm-hmm.
They don't, part-time workers don't get medical insurance.
But what if they're from another city and they're ending over here?
That's workers' comp, maybe because they're under our workers' comp, but not that one.
Okay. That's all I...
Is our, I, my question is, it's used to, the firefighter age used to be 18. Did we raise it to 21? And can they go, can we go back to 18?
Nineteen.
It's 19? So they can't be 18, like it, did it used to be 18?
No, that was a nightmare.
Okay. Okay.
And it was a personnel nightmare.
Okay.
We're going to try 19.
Okay, so it was 21, but we're going back to 19. We're going to lower it.
It's 20.
20, okay. So we are changing an age, okay. Because maybe that'll help recruit some of these younger people that, if they're able to vote, they should be able to serve our country, they should be able to... Um, do, well...
To be able to get up and be a worker, I'm saying.
Yeah.
Get up and go to school?
They get up and go to school, they should be able to come to work. Um, I just want to thank our firefighters. You know, it's not easy for them. And to be in this position, you know, a few weeks ago, I sat in this meeting, had to make decisions, and you heard everybody say, don't compete, can't compete, it's going to hurt business for some one company, et cetera. But all of our citizens that were here at that meeting, you're hearing it tonight. It's going on in the police and fire department in every city. So our chief explained it well. We just had it, Chief Beverson just had it in the police department. A sister city raised it in the middle of the year. Um, and it's, when you have a budget and it's for a 12-month period, you have to stick to that budget unless you somewhere get a lot of money. Um, hopefully, you know, as we continue, the amphitheater continues to generate money, we'll be able to pay more. Um, but it's a competition thing, and it's a, basically, that's what they use to recruit people, is money. Their benefits might not be the same, um, but they use it. And it's sad that it's happening, um, because we care about our public safety, and as they leave home, um, we had, you know, accident with the state trooper just a few weeks ago on I-10. Wiggins just had an accident with firefighter up there. It's just a sad situation, but we want to thank all of our public service, um, public safety, and all of our city police for all your hard work. We have a motion by Councilman College, a second by Councilman Anderson, all in favor? Councilman George? Motion carries. And just to touch on that, I know our firefighters will be glad to have it, because some of them have worked so many overtime hours, they can't even attend, um, functions with their family and friends, and they deserve some time off. So kudos to them for sticking it out.
We're also, once they come over and work for us and realize how ready it is here in Goche, move over to Goche instead of...
All right. I like that thinking, Chief. Um, we got business agenda item number two. Approval of the document of claims, they were presented by our city clerk, Ms. Montgomery. Um, they were posted online, so that is our presentation agenda for them. Do we have any public comments on business agenda item number two? None? Do we have a motion by council?
Make a motion, we approve the document of claims, provided that all entries are on a true, correct, properly entered and not fraudulent.
We have a motion by Councilman College, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Jackson, any discussion, starting with Councilman George?
No discussion.
Councilman Jackson?
No discussion.
Councilman Gilat?
No comment.
Councilman College?
No comment.
Councilman Anderson?
No comment.
Councilman Elvin?
No comment.
All in favor? Councilman George? Motion carries. That brings us to our consent agenda. All will be, um, approved in one motion unless council wants to, um, remove one. One consent agenda item number one, approval of amendments from the recess council meeting on May 21st, 2024. Two consent agenda item number two, approval to retain Butler Snow, LLP, to prepare and submit the City of Goche's continuing financial disclosure statement for fiscal year 2023 pursuant to Securities and Exchange Commission Rule 15C2-12. Consent agenda item number three, approval of water and sewer adjustments for June 2024 in the amount of $25,972.72. And consent number four, approval of the lease purchase agreement with Community Bank for E1 Class A pumper. Does anybody want to remove one? Do we have a motion to approve consent 1 through 4?
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Gilat, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman College, all in favor? Councilman George? Motion carries.
Mayor, since the official business still rumbles, has to be excused for contractual reasons.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to citizen comments. 646. Monroe Cornet. Good, how are you? Take your first and last name and address.
Monroe Cornet, 2921 Pike Code. Uh, I just got a couple things. I woke up yesterday morning, a bunch of non-speaking workers in my yard digging ditches. Asked me where, what they were doing, and all said, no English.
No English. You're the second person that's happened to this week.
I asked a supervisor. They couldn't, didn't understand what I was going to say, what I was asking for. My wife called the police. And one of the officers, they come out there. And I understand the easement, all that, not a problem, but why do they not notify? Dad, you put a hanger on my damn mailbox while I was on vacation. And then I wake up at 7:00 in the morning, you're digging a ditch. Never, no prior notice, going to do a ditch, no window, just say, several, several weeks. And your officer chief said I was being paid. That's what he told me. He didn't look at the sewer line, and it just got cut. That was a ditch. He just said I was paid. The sewer line got cut, of course, they fixed it. So, and my other line I have is with utilities. I've been here for two years this month. I have tried since August of '22 to get somebody to clean out the drainage behind your whole property, so the water don't back up into my yard. Nothing's happened. I've had work orders then, some of them got canceled, I think I still have a valid one, and no time for it. It's not the drainage ditch, it's the ditch, it's a drainage ditch, but not the one you put in, where the water goes and collects and drains over the cliff. Been trying for two years, almost. Thing is, they will have to get a contractor to come in and tear out the trees. The place has never been cleaned since it was built, never. And one for the whole city. Pike Code area has two and a half inch sewer lines. Now, is that code? I don't know. But that's all we have for a sewer line. We don't have an eight-inch, we got an eight-inch water line, but we don't have, we have two and a half inch sewer line. And I didn't know that until yesterday. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rodney Gerda?
Say something first. Yeah. Ramona, can you check on his work order about ditches being cleaned and contacting him? If you give her your phone number, I'm sure she'll be contacting you.
I think we have that, because we've put one in before.
Well, see if we can find out what's happening. And as far as the people that don't speak English digging those ditches, that's AT&amp;T. We're having a problem with them all over this city. And I told one of your neighbors the other day to just call the police and have them arrested.
That's what he put on the door.
When, after they started digging?
No, I was on vacation.
Oh, okay.
But see, it says several weeks, no timeline, several weeks.
We're having a serious problem with them, and I don't know how to fix it. I wish I could.
Ms. Shancy, did AT&amp;T pull permits for that area?
As I checked, when he, my family then called me.
They did pull them?
I checked, and it's got confirmed, they pulled a permit, and it, it's in their easement, it's in the right of way. So it's the right of way there.
That they're doing this...
Doing this work, but, you know, call, I got something to do with some of the driveway, I think, if I recall correctly. But if they mess it up, they got to fix it. And I've been rounding around with them for all this, got the sewer lines, got the water lines. And one time I just stopped and been doing it, and the whole city.
Can we do a social media post, Ms. Shancy, or something, explaining a service provider and right of ways? That unfortunately, the right of way, if they pull a permit with the city, they're able to be there, but if any damage, that service provider has to pay to repair whatever. If any damage, please contact us and report it, or something, so we can try to... I mean, it seems like what we had going on down in Ward 2 and over here in...
Well, but see, that's a little different, because they weren't, they weren't in their easement. They were in our easement, where they didn't have any right to be.
Right.
Because it was easier. And we had water sewer lines that goes together, and they're just cutting at every turn, constantly. So I told them they couldn't do that anymore, and I stopped them from doing it, period. But this one, their easement is in our right of way, that's the difference.
Yeah, I was just saying, if we can do a...
They're cutting...
Yeah, but they're not, they're not, they're...
You just said they cut the sewer line.
But they're responsible for, if it's my driveway and they come cut it, they're responsible to, to me as a citizen, to fix my driveway.
Right, that's what I'm saying, if we can do, just do a post on a contact or something, just so when something happens, they can reach out, because obviously, there's a language barrier too, and they won't tell you who to report to, but we might have a contact for the contractor to have them reach out to the citizen, because that's what happened in the other area.
The guy showed up, they had four crews working. One guy, they came in, and he got four crews working in different areas.
Right. Um, we've dealt with them, we've been dealing with them, Mr. Cornet. Ask our service provider, H2O Innovations. We've been there with their best sewer lines and everything, and they have to repair it and work all throughout the night and on holidays. Mr. Gerda?
Yes. Hi, my name is Rodney, here today, 1713 Elvin Boulevard. Don't worry, I'm not in trouble, so... Dante Elvin, Rusty Anderson, Adam College, Casey Vaughn, Gordon Gilat, Richard Jackson, Cameron George. I want to thank y'all for what all y'all have done for our city and improvements and the fact of sound. And to Josh Danos, I want to thank him for, uh, meeting with me and addressing my concerns. And to our fine city manager, she's a great city manager, and appreciate her coming out with her staff and taking a look at our little problem. And, uh, we appreciate everything the city does, but also, which I don't know about Ms. Paula, she's a class artist, she is excellent. I just want to throw that out there. But, uh, she's a great city manager, and just want to thank y'all for our, you know, doing everything for our city, and if you would, I know y'all will, make sure you support our police and fire, and don't forget the ambulance people on my head.
Looking forward to see you at the next meeting, Rod.
Next, councilor, at the sound. Dela Moore?
Um, I was looking, um, how y'all doing?
Good.
I was about to speak to y'all, I never speak because my friend's gone.
Take your address.
Dela Moore, 1820 West Gate Parkway. Uh, I'm, uh, agenda number three, approval of water and sewer adjustment for June 24th in the amount of $25,972. I don't understand it, that went so fast, what, what that mean?
Well, that's if you have a water leak, or, um, you have a water repair, and all the citizens that have them, you have to go back to your average, then they adjust the sewer part off, um, and that's how it works. It's a process, the utility department, you fill out a rate adjustment form when you have an accident, and it just happened to be maybe a lot in that month.
Okay, okay, very good, because, uh, we still have this brown water. And I thought it was going to flush the water lines out and get it nice and clean. It is so brown, it's embarrassing. I had some company over the holidays as well. For the graduation, there was one, what's wrong with this water, why is it so brown? There's still a problem on West Gate Parkway. The water's still brown. And, um, it doesn't matter how well we speak or what we say, we know Rusty is going to ride his time out. We know that, but just good to know, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Mr. Charles Moore. Ms. Moore, y'all just don't know, Ms. Moore, she gets out and works in her neighborhood and volunteers. She's a fine lady.
Charles Moore, 1820 West Gate Parkway, Goche City. Um, I still, uh, addressed Anderson about he need to move on, because what he said was not good for citizens, uh, I mean, uh, file war, war code. We don't need that kind of attitude there. So I'm actually looking him to resign, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. That brings us to our... That brings us to our council comments. It's the first meeting of the month, so we will start with you, Councilman George.
I have no comment.
Councilman Jackson?
No comment.
Councilman Gilat?
Just want y'all to remember in a couple of days from now, June the 6th, D-Day. Big Normandy Invasion, so remember you veterans and those that lost their lives during that invasion. I saw a thing on TV tonight where they identified three more of the ones that's been, you know, unidentified, they identified three more of those soldiers that went in on Normandy Beach. So please, when D-Day rolls around, remember those guys.
Thank you. Thank you, um, Councilman Gilat? Councilman College?
I have no comments this evening.
Councilman, um, Anderson had to leave. Councilman Elvin?
As always, I want to thank, uh, all our employees for the work you do each and every day. The city wouldn't run without you, you are the backbone of this city. Uh, the place for all our employees. I hope in the next, uh, budget session that we were able to address the issues with public safety and all our employees to quell the issue of, uh, turnover. It was a problem the whole time I was employed with the City of Goche. And I hope we're able to, to address it. Just thank y'all for what you did.
Thank you, Councilman Elvin. I just want to, you know, thank the American Legion. If you missed the Avenue of Flags ceremony that we had here, and I want to thank the public safety employees and Councilman College, Councilman Gilat, Councilman Anderson, um, were able to attend, and it was a great, um, event here for Memorial Day, put on by the American Legion. The chairman was Paul Moaning, and he does a great job. And to all the volunteers from the American Legion, to the Boy Scout troop, to Goche Community Pride, to the citizens. Um, it was a nice, um, day here on the city frontline. If you missed it, I encourage you to visit the Tribute Tower. Also, um, our graduation for Hus, um, Goche High School, um, was a great event. Myself and Councilman College attended, um, the high school, and Councilman Jackson, um, attended also, and we had a great evening up there in the swamp with our youth. And then we left and came down to the sound where we had great live entertainment there also that evening.
We had both at the same time, really.
And we had both going on at the same time, and it really, um, it was a lot of concern, but it worked out. And just, you know, the entertainment was booked, um, really, truthfully, probably, before graduation calendar came out that that was the graduation, but no announcements have been made. But we, um, Ms. Shancy, I want to thank you for, um, working with our superintendent and the staff and, um, 46 Entertainment to accommodate, so it went as smoothly as possible. I also want to remind everybody, I echo what Councilman College, um, Councilman Elvin says about our public safety. Um, when I first became councilman, it was an issue, and it, we got high... it, we got high, um, our pay up there, and it was working good, but like we said earlier, it fluctuates, and it's a competition thing, unfortunately. Um, but we are committed to our staff and our public safety, and Ms. Shancy always does a good job to, um, accommodate them and try to do the best we can do on the budget we have. So I have faith that she will be addressing that situation, um, with all of our directors. Monday, I happened to come by here because there was an event today at the college, and we, I had purchased to give some door prizes away, because, um, they had not received any from any businesses, and I wanted to make sure Goche was represented at that event. So, um, and it was the Alderman Promotion Spring Spouse that was speaking at the college, so I really wanted to show support for her. So I did that, and while I was here, I received a text from one of our youth, um, who's no longer a youth anymore. He's in the working field. He's a school teacher. And his name is Logan Stone. And he came with a little friend up here. Um, he asked, "Mayor, I'm in town. Where are you?" And I told him I was up here at City Hall about to leave, and he said, "I'll stop by." You know, when your youth reach out and wanna see you, you know you're doing a good job. Our city's doing a good job, cause we are, our youth are our future. But when they showed up here, we did not know at the time, two motorcycles come. And if you did not know, we are on the Tour of Honor, Arrive to Remember, Stop Here at the Tribute Tower. So while we're here, two veterans pull up on their motorcycles, and they're parking, arranging their vehicle with their number to get. And I was thinking, man, they should move their motorcycles a little out on the front to get a nice photo of the whole thing. And the veteran said, "Mayor, we cannot go out there unless we have permission." And I said, "Well, yeah, you have permission." And what they're doing is touring all these veteran monuments throughout the region. And all I can tell you is, if you see them here after hours, I encourage you to stop, or during the office hours, and you see them out there, stop and thank them for their service. Because they served our country, and they're touring all these veteran monuments to take time to remember. And I encourage all of you to be blessed and thankful for what we have here, and take time to remember. Because that youth, who, I had no idea that his friend, Logan Stone's friend, served our country also. So we were able to thank him for his service. But to hear these veterans, and no, they did not look their age. They were in their seventies. I thought they were probably in their early sixties. And them traveling as far as they did on motorcycles, and Councilman Delott, I'm not gonna say anything else about that. Um, but to Mr. James Owens and Mr. Ace Owens, they gave me this little card to track them. So if you know a veteran that's doing the ride, you can track them on an app that they have and see where they're located. And they're all leaving little coins out at the monument, so people will know that their troop or where they're from has passed through our region. So I just want you to Google, Facebook, Tour of Honor, follow them, and just thank them for their service, cause it's really a great thing, and it is helping get economic development through our city also. So, um, thank all of our veterans who are here for your service. That brings us to, and I hope you all have a blessed week. That brings us to our city manager comments. Ms. Shancy? Ms. Montgomery, our city clerk? And Mr. Danos, our city attorney?
Yes, sir.
I'm glad you got a small coffee and not a large. Do we have a motion to recess until June the eighteenth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P.M.? So move. Motion by Councilman Jackson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Delott. All in favor? Councilman George? Motion carries. And welcome back, Sam. We're glad to have you too. I didn't wanna forget. And happy birthday to our city employee, Babs, tomorrow. She works in the planning department. Um, and we wanna wish her, oh, real fast, Chastity, please stand. How dare I forget? Chastity just got an award here on the Mississippi Gulf Coast for one of the top, um, one hundred women, um, businesswomen here on the Mississippi Gulf Coast, and we just thank you for your hard work. And wanted to, um, thank you for serving the citizens of Goche. Um, all your volunteerism, and, um, congratulations on your award. And Chastity thought she, um, was gonna sneak through. We are now recessed.